A little early. Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome everyone this evening, and I'm gonna go ahead and call the order this Monday, December 6th, 2021, Board of Commissioners meeting. And the first item we have is the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And I'll ask our vice chairman if he would lead us in that this evening.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this glorious evening. Lord, I thank you that where it's cold everywhere else, it's pretty darn pleasant here, even in the courtroom now. Father, I ask for your wisdom this evening as we go about our business. Lord, I thank you for the Thanksgiving season, Father, and that spirit of continuing to be grateful for that which you have bestowed upon us. Lord, as we approach the Christmas holiday, Lord, I cry out to you, Father, for safety and protection for each and every one of our residents, our visitors. Lord, and I especially ask your blessing safely for our first responders, Lord. As they serve during this holiday season, Father, I pray that you would keep them protected and safe, that they would be able to return home to their families, as they help those be able to be with our families. Lord, bless this evening, bless our decisions tonight, and Jesus name my house.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Beaumont. Okay, the next item we have is the approval of agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add one, just to move it and add it. The resolution for the lifesaving event for Mr. Ted Fox, I'd like to put that at the top of the administrative reports.
Okay. Any other items?
Just check that A, and I guess move the other two to the B and C.
We're moving down accordingly.
Where was that?
Under administrative reports.
Okay, so Chairman, I'd like to add a new letter D, and that's to have a discussion on holiday wage.
Under new business?
Under new business, I'm sorry. It's under new business for accounting employees. And then like to read letter consent agenda as echo letter E.
Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item, our first meeting in December is a little unique because we have to take care of some business. And at this time, it's for the election of the board and the vice chair and the chair and vice chair of the board. So I'm gonna turn this over to our county attorney this time.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to 153A 39 of the general statutes, the board is required at its first meeting of December in odd-numbered years to elect a chair and a vice chair. So we'll now proceed to the election of a chair. Are there any nominations for chair of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners?
I would like to nominate Mike Payment to be our chairman of the board for 2022.
Mr. Payment's name is in nomination. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All in favor of Mike Payment as chairman, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Ayes have it.
Thank you. Okay, well, then, this next item is the election of the vice chair. At this time, I'll ask the board for any nominations for the vice chair. Open the floor.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Beaumont to be our vice chair.
Now, I'll second that.
Okay, any further nominations? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the nominations. Ask for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Vice Chairman, again. At this time, we'll go ahead and take a short recess, and if anybody wants to switch chairs or anything, unless everybody's good where they're at. Any movements around? Okay, well, then, not, that's a real short recess. And I'm gonna get into public comment. All right, under public comment, we have two people signed up, and this is an opportunity for individuals in our county community to come up and speak before this board. I just ask you to come up and state your name and address for the record and discuss anything you want. You've got three minutes, and we'll keep a timer. When you see the yellow light come on, it just means you've got about a 30-second time limit, and then red just says if you could just wrap up your comments. And again, we're here, listen, content, or listen to you with any comments. So first we have up is Mark Chappell.
Mark Chappell, 113 Mimoso Lane, Elizabeth City, North Carolina. Been with the Currituck County Sheriff's Office for 20 years now, been in law enforcement for 25. And I'm coming here tonight to ask you, as the commissioners of Currituck, to consider doing the supplement at a reduced rate. I know the supplement is when you do your complete 30 years. I have done 25 years. I'm actually retiring, went on a 25-year retirement in the state of North Carolina. One day, Mr. Payment and I actually had a conversation, so I actually went and crunched the numbers after we talked. And I actually found that if I retired at the 25-year retirement, and that's what I sent around to all of you, I would actually save the county money. I broke it down by how much I would make over the next four years with the 2% scolas and another 2% on the longevity. And I would actually make with my overtime $351,000 and some change. If you gave me the supplement at a reduced rate, and I'm just asking for it as a reduced rate, I don't, I'm not, I didn't do the full 30. I'm asking for it to be a reduced rate. I asked it actually at 80% on here. I would save you guys a quarter of a million dollars over four years. What I'm making as a corporal, and that trickles down, so as a corporal, whoever takes my place will not be making the same amount of money as I'm making now, so that will save you money in the long run also. Even when they promote, they won't be making the same rate as me because they won't have the same longevities that I've accrued over the last 20 years. I would, instead of getting paid $120,000 over the 10 years, if I stayed the four years, it would be $115,000 over a 12-year period. So it's less money over 12 years than I'd get paid in 10 years if I stayed for the full 30. You guys would save only on that, would be $4,800. But, like I said, the total that you would save was $236,000 for me going out actually early. And I know there are some people, or there's been some talk about, well, what if somebody just came in? I think you still do it on longevity and do it on age, or you do 50%. If they only do five years, I give them their something at 50%, if that was something you were looking at, and you could go on from there. But somebody that spends 20 years in this job, and, you know, I've lived in this community, I've coached in this community, I've been part of this community, I really feel I deserve the money, but I know it requires you to actually approve it. Is there any questions you'd like to ask me?
Thank you, Ms. Chappell. The only thing I'll say, this is a public comment portion of the meeting, so any feedback, especially something like this, the board would have to sit down and discuss it and get with the county manager on this before we could give you any answer tonight.
That's why I came to talk to you all, I wanted to come up. And I probably, I did wait a little bit for the, for our state senate, our House of Representatives was great. They voted to do the buyback 112 to nothing, but our senators are still sitting on it. If they wouldn't have sat on it, I would have went a different route, and that's why I didn't come and talk to you at the beginning.
This was, this was also, I presented this when it was given to me from Mr. Chappell and to, and I believe the county, well, you were the county attorney slash manager, he gave it to Sandra, our finance director, and she looked over at everything too, which was, what, four weeks ago, maybe?
Yes.
Four, four to six weeks ago.
Well, then, thank you, Mr. Chappell. We'll look at this and we'll go to our county attorney and try to have your decision. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. Thank you. Okay, the next item we have is Ms. Barbara Snowden.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Snowden, and I live at 154 Courthouse Road. I come before you tonight because I would like to issue an invitation to each of you and to all of the people who are listening to the tree lighting service that will be Saturday night at 6:00 here at the courthouse. We have a special guest, of course, Santa. We will have, the entertainment will be provided by Currituck County High School Choir, and we will provide traditional refreshments for the people who come. I would like to, at this point, publicly thank Samantha for doing the decoration of the courthouse. The Historic Society handles the jail, and y'all handle the courthouse, and we have, I hope we are having two new trees that are still lit. When I came in, they were not, so we'll get that straight. But we invite the public to come, and we hope for a very nice evening and seeing this courthouse the way, looking the way it should. I will also remind you, every time you're gonna see me, I'm gonna say exactly the same thing. Remember, this building is coming, or the site, this site is coming up on its 300th anniversary. And I want to make sure that the courthouse and the jail, and maybe an archaeological dig on this area to go back those 300 years when the courthouse, the first courthouse, was built where you're standing right now. Thank you very much for your time and patience.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden.
Did she get, Barbara, did you give the exact time it's gonna start?
6:00.
6:00.
And how, for like 6 to 7, probably? I gotta do the River's Edge Christmas parade.
That's one, yeah, I'm sure, yeah, it'll be a fun time for all. All right, that's all I had signed up for the public comment. Is there anyone who showed up late that did not get a chance to sign up that would like to speak at the public comment portion? Okay, yes, sir, if you could come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Shortway, 584 Ocean Trail, Corolla. I come up here to thank Commissioner McCord for inviting Corolla over to the parade. It was the first year we were there. It was very impressive. You did a great job, and anytime you need us to be part of it, we'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak that wasn't signed up? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment portion of this, and I'm gonna get into our commissioners' reports, the next item, and I'm gonna start over to my right with Commissioner Etheridge this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Tuesday night, I had the privilege, along with a couple of more commissioners, Jarvis and Commissioner Payment, of attending the naming of the Stanley Griggs Training Center for EMS. It was a very well-attended event and very, to me, meant a lot to Stanley because I've worked with Stanley for a long time, and no one's been any more committed to the public health and safety of our county and its citizens and the people that travel through this county than Stanley has, and it was a much-received honor for him. Yesterday, we lost a, what I would call a true American hero, Bob Dole. He was the epitome of the Greatest Generation, and we're losing these men left and right. There's very few left from the Greatest Generation. And if you know one that lives in that Greatest Generation, who was part of that Greatest Generation, thank them for their service because without them, we wouldn't be here tonight. And with Christmas coming up, I hope everyone has a happy and a merry Christmas. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge and Commissioner McCord.
I would like to just say, I just want to say thank you to some people for the assistance with the Christmas parade. We didn't have it last year due to COVID. We've discussed that before. If COVID didn't cancel it, I think Cooper did. But, like I said, so the Christmas parade went off really well. It was a lot of work. I've helped, he's now the clerk of court in Camden, James Midget, for probably the last six years with that, and I was like number two, and that was pretty easy to step up to have to be number one, and it was a lot. But the cooperative extension staff was out of this world, they were awesome. Cameron Lowe and her staff is phenomenal. Sheila Gregory every year helps, and James Midget told me, he said, "As long as Sheila helps you, you'll be fine." And he was 100% right. She was huge in helping with everything. And one of the ladies that works in the cooperative, Ella Skinner, she helped a lot, and she had a blast. They did really, really good. They did a ton of stuff. Donald Cooper, retired deputy, every year, we've had 28 of the Christmas parties or Christmas parades. I think Donald's been at every one of them and volunteered to help with Traffic Direct. And Donald's just an icon in the community, and I really appreciate his help. I had a bunch of other deputies, Sergeant Will Davis, Sergeant Jesse Taylor, Deputy Tom Voorhees, Deputy Pete Odom, those four guys helped me a lot as well. We had over 40 entries. It was the biggest parade we've ever had, to my knowledge, in the 28 in the past. Almost 100 vehicles, different things ranging from fire trucks, which the fire departments really went all out, they did a good job. Law enforcement vehicles, boats, equipment, horses, school buses, and we had everything. I mean, you name it. And some of the floats were just, I mean, they were, the schools was great. Tourism always has, I mean, there were some really, really good floats. And the couple of our other sponsors, Regent Rent, Sean Jennings. The biggest thing that's always been a problem with the parade is you ran out of room, and when you hit the animal control building, everybody wanted to stop, and it would jam up because that road was not lit well. Well, I got three light trailers out there, and we had it lit up like a Christmas tree. It was very bright, so we didn't have that problem this year. But, like I said, it went off great. You know, the Currituck FOP Lodge 89, they were big, you know, sponsors. Trophies, there was for the top four. I did buy my granddaughter, I'm gonna go ahead and put that out there, a $10 trophy. I have her seat in my money clip if somebody says that something shady was done. But she got first place, cutest in show. She was a little Cinderella and had her little carriage, and she was, I did put her up front, I will say that, but she was cute, so I don't. But all the hours into it, I thought I kind of deserved that one, so, but like I said, it was a great, great success. I'm glad it's over. It was 21 hours on Friday that day. I got home at 1:00, and I fell asleep with my clothes on, so shoes and all. But, like I said, that's pretty much it. And like, the attendance was phenomenal. We had probably close to 1,500 people. The parking lot was packed. Everybody was behaved. You know, sometimes when you get that large crowd of people, you might have one or two partaking in some alcoholic beverages, but I didn't see any of that. That was even better. But, like I said, thanks to all that attended, thanks to all. It's gonna be bigger next year. I'll challenge Dennis Anderson to put maybe Kingsling or something in there if he's, I know he's probably not watching, but I'll call him. But, like I said, so, thanks again, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Beaumont.
So continuing down that path, right? The first thing I would suggest is that, what an amazing event. And I, so I talked to Chief Shortway, found out that he was entered in the parade, and asked, "So who's your staff?" To which he said, "I'm just bringing the truck." So I was able to grab two granddaughters, throw them in the engine, and they were throwing out melted candies. Samantha's son got a piece of it. Unbeknownst to me, Chief Shortway had the heater on the basket of chocolate, and it didn't do well. But, my gosh, what a great time. So when my granddaughter started wishing everybody Merry Christmas over the loudspeaker of the fire truck, and that was pretty cool. And I was tempted to talk on the loudspeaker too when I saw Brandon on the side of the road. But I, that was inappropriate. So, anyway, great time. The only problem with being in the parade is you don't get to see the parade. So, you know, we saw trucks in the far-off, you know, getting positioned and ready to go, but I, it was an amazing event. To everybody that participated, Kevin, God bless you, brother, because I know that's gotta be a love and a passion. But with that said, thank you, Kevin, for all your hard work, and thanks to everybody that participated because it was, you know, considering the size of our county, that was an amazing event because it went on for quite a period of time. Anyway, so a lot of fun there, and then, again, kind of tag teaming. You know, thank you, everyone. You know, this is kind of a Christmas wish. You know, thank you, everyone, for your support for this board, for our community, for the things that we're trying to do, things that we want to do. And it's just, you know, spirit of gratefulness. We're, we continue to be one of the most blessed counties in this state, and if you don't agree with that, then there's plenty other counties that you can relocate, relocate to. So, anyway, with that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman, and I'm just gonna, I don't know what to say, just want to say thank you again to this board for allowing me to be the chairman for another year. I appreciate the support there and look forward to working with all of you all and moving this county. As Paul said, great things are happening, and we got a lot still to get done in this county. The other thing I want to mention is, we, yesterday, we recently lost one of our previous county man, or county commissioners. If you live in the south end of the county, you may have known the name Newton Hampton. He was a commissioner of this county from 1980 to 1984. He lives just in south of the Currituck High School on the main highway. He was a farmer. He was very active with his children in the school systems and with the band at the time when we were there. And I went to school with one of his daughters there, but really nice gentleman, did a lot for the community, well-known, very active in the church, and he's gonna be well missed, but he did serve the county for four years from 1984, and I just wanted to recognize him tonight and wish his family well, and we all just say a prayer for that family this evening. And with that, just remember again, the fire departments, volunteer firefighters out there, fires or chimney fires, house fires, we're getting a lot of structured fire calls. Accidents are still on the road, tourism's still coming down, so thank you, first responders. If you can get involved with the fire departments, they're looking for volunteers all the time. I do know on the 18th, Lower Currituck is having a breakfast with Santa, so if you want to come by on the 18th at the fire station, Lower Currituck and Grandy, they'd love to see you there and show you around, and you can say hello. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner White.
Thank you, sir. I have to say, Kevin, you're, I think your granddaughter would have taken best in show. That was quite the, it took us a minute to figure out who it was, I was like, oh, okay, I know who that is. She looked cute, she was having a ball, so good job there, Gramps, on that one. For those of you who maybe read into the budget or don't read into the agenda in the budget tonight, we put $750,000 in for a playground in Corolla at the historic Corolla Park. We had intended on doing that last year for having it potentially going over this winter season when the tourists aren't there. Things didn't work out, so it's now in the budget, so we'll be working on that going forward to add a playgrounds to the Corolla Park, which is much needed, and look forward to that. And just a housekeeping note for us, we normally don't have a second meeting in December, and we will be having one this year. Goes to what Commissioner Beaumont was saying about how busy this county is and how blessed we are, that we have to actually have a second meeting in December. And I was flipping through old meetings and agendas for whatever reason, and going back a number of years, and it's amazing how many meetings weren't had, that there wasn't enough going on, that they might have one a month here and there, and how many were missed, and we don't get that very often anymore.
Three in a row.
Yeah, so, so it's.
We added one in the month of December.
We added one this year, yeah. So it's, it is amazing how much this county's grown, the amount of businesses coming through, the amount of work that it takes to be a commissioner this year. So that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner White and Commissioner Jarvis.
Thank you. I want to start by thanking the Currituck Chamber of Commerce for putting on the Coastal Economic Summit on November 17th. It was a great dialogue that the business community, nonprofits, and government officials and government entities were able to sit down and kind of dissect problems and look at long-range and some short-term solutions to some of the issues and potential problems that we may encounter with tourism and that we don't always think of. So that was an excellent summit, and I would just want to say, great job to the chamber for putting that on. I also have to mention the Christmas parade. Normally, I don't get to go to the Christmas parade because it's my girls' weekend on the eastern shore, but that was canceled this year, so I had the, I guess this was a bigger parade than I expected. I've been to the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Savannah. While it wasn't the three- or four-hour parade of that caliber, it was great to see the fire trucks, so many areas of the county represented. Kevin, your granddaughter is best in show, no doubt. She was wheeling around, I'm glad she didn't take anybody out. She must have gone through your driving school. But it was really a great time. I thoroughly enjoyed it, so everyone who helped make that possible, thank you. And finally, to piggyback on what Owen Etheridge said about Stanley Griggs, it is a proud moment to be able to dedicate that building to such a distinguished citizen of our county that has done so much for the county. And that portion of the building is training the next generation of first responders from the simulative ambulance that is able to train our first responders with firsthand experience. It is a great space, and it couldn't be named after a better citizen of our county, so congratulations to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. Okay, next, we have our county manager slash county attorney report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This afternoon, Commissioner White and I attended a session of Superior Court in Passau Tank County where the court heard arguments in the lawsuit Corolla Civic Association versus the county. That is a lawsuit that challenges this board's expenditure of occupancy tax money over a period of years. I think overall, we felt like the arguments went well on behalf of the county, and the judge has taken the matter under advisement, and we anticipate maybe getting a decision by the end of this year or early, early next year. Next, Parks and Recreation Director Jason Weeks advised me today that Soundside Park Playground Equipment has arrived and should start installation and be complete in about two weeks. So that'd be another park now after Knott's Island that will have all-new equipment. And then lastly, please remember that December 22nd, Wednesday, December 22nd, is the employee holiday Christmas lunch, so of course, we'd like to see all the board members there to participate in that time of fellowship with your employees. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Will there be fish?
Yes, there will be fish, two types of fish.
Just a point of clarification, it's Sound Park.
Oh.
Sorry.
Sorry.
And speaking of parks too, everybody, look on the county website, the Jason Weeks, our Parks and Rec Director, which I sit on that board. They had a really nice video and showed all the parks. I went Sunday and took our little one to the Maple Park. The parks in the county, I mean, they weren't that nice when I grew up as a kid here, but I mean, the Parks and Rec guys do a great job, so if you got small kids, take them to the parks, they're awesome.
I could say what parks?
Thank you, Mr. McCree. Okay, the next item is our administrative reports, and first item, item A, is gonna be the resolution for recognition. I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin McCord.
If I could have Mr. Fox come up, and if he wants to bring his wife and anybody else, I'm gonna basically read this. The morning that this occurred in the county was August 4th. I typically work in the office as a lieutenant at the sheriff's. You come up here and do what I want you to. I checked on, I checked on, like you said before, there was a house fire roughly five miles north of my house. So as soon as I checked on, I heard it, and I knew, you know, the guys are out there, so I responded immediately. So, I responded immediately up there. When I arrived and seen, this is kinda what happened, and this is what the county is presenting to Mr. Fox. It's a resolution of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners and a recognition and appreciation for the service of Ted Fox to the citizens of Currituck County, North Carolina. That morning, August 4th, 2021, Ted Fox observed fire and smoke coming from a residential structure literally across the canal from his home in Tulsa Bay. He went over to the residents to try to assist. Basically, you kicked the front door in because there was somebody in the home. There was something kinda blocking the front door. The home was, I would say, half fully built. I mean...
They burned it down.
So, after that, he literally, they found out there was an octant in the residence, and Mr. Fox busted one of the windows out, and they helped, he helped. How old is he, 21, I believe, Mr. Duffin?
What, 21?
21.
Two brothers.
Yeah. Helped them out of the window to safety. I mean, like I said, I got there when the first call came out, like eight minutes later. It was completely wind engulfed. So, the county wanted to recognize for him for that, you know, helping get them out of the house. His immediate and selfless lifesaving action rendered to a neighbor's credit to, excuse me, for him, which the citizens of Currituck County are very grateful for. Now, therefore, we are resolved by the Currituck County Board of Commissioners in that, on behalf of the citizens of Currituck County, the Board of Commissioners now has a lifesaving action of Ted Fox and extends an appreciation for his dedication to the community and need of others. And that's about it. We want to say that. We also want to thank the county. Now, let me say, when I go to the scene sometimes, and I'm Sheriff's Department, I'm not county commissioner, you know, the guy's gonna give me a hard time sometimes. So, he's there, and I was like, I knew who he was, but I didn't know. So, he had left, and when I come, like an hour after the fire, they said, hey, we need to move the vehicles. They literally, they had their baby that day, so she was going into labor. So, I told some of the fire guys, we're gonna remove all these trucks and these hoses and stuff. And they looked at me like, I could go somewhere. And I said, I'm in serious. And they were like, what are you talking about? I said, we gotta move all this crap now, come on. And they were like, what? And he had left, and she was going into labor. So, literally, all the fire, volunteer fire department guys, the EMTs, the deputies that were out there, myself, we were grabbing everything out of the way. We probably cleared it more than me. Yeah, nice. You know, he could be out of there. But like I said, it's not only did he save somebody's life that day, but then he's hauling there and bringing a new one to life later that day. So, like I said, very thankful for his service.
Thank you. This just shows that our citizens are always out there to help other people in need.
And by the way, Senior Chief, you're not allowed to leave till the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
Hey, I moved y'all up to the front. Listen, I've been trying for years, and no one ever listens.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I moved y'all up at the front so y'all wouldn't have to stay so cheap. Light on.
Yeah. The next item is, we have the honor this evening to have in our presence a Currituck resident and a former chairman of this board, now is our state representative Bobby Hanig. He is going to discuss, have some discussion regarding state efforts to resolve Eagle Creek wastewater issues and possibly some other items. So, with that, welcome Representative Hanig, and we miss you up here, but thank you for everything you're doing for this community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. It's still kinda intimidating to be standing in front of you guys. It's awe-inspiring, for sure. I know it should be, absolutely. So, what I want to come talk about today, and for folks that are on TV, wherever you are, this is not at the behest of the commissioners. This is just something I felt like we needed to have a discussion about, kinda let people know where we are with the Moyoc wastewater treatment facility. I understand the frustration. I know you all understand the frustration, the lack of communication, the lack of things getting done.
Eagle Creek, right?
Yeah, Eagle Creek, sorry. Sorry, Eagle Creek. So, it's been a long time coming, okay? So, you know, myself, the county staff, the county commissioners, Senator Steinberg, DEQ, we're all very frustrated. Our hands have been tied in this situation. They really have. It's a very, very unique situation going on there and trying to navigate through it and get a resolution as quickly as possible using every legal avenue. We've been communicating that with commissioners, with staff, with DEQ, with legislative folks in Raleigh. It's been a tough effort. I think through these efforts, we're starting to make some progress. The biggest issue, well, one of the biggest issues I had with EnviroLink in this situation was the communication, the lack thereof. You know, folks calling me, emailing me, sending smoke signals, hey, man, there's nothing going on at Eagle Creek. We're not getting any resolutions, nothing's getting fixed. And I'm like, how can that be? I'm talking to these folks on the phone, they're doing this, they're doing that. So, roughly two months ago, had a long conversation with EnviroLink. You know, y'all have got to step up your communication, your customer service sucks, we gotta get this taken care of. We gotta let these people know that we're trying to fix the problem. They agreed with me, but then didn't do anything. So, fast forward two weeks later, I have the conversation with the county manager, you know, what's going on? Are you getting communication from EnviroLink? We're not getting any communications, okay? What's going on? We gotta call them back up. Why isn't the communication coming? Okay, we'll get that taken care of. Fast forward to yesterday. Well, fast forward to today, which is now two weeks tomorrow, still no communication. They're doing work out there, but they're letting folks know what's going on. And that's the most important thing. When people are having an issue, if they're not getting communicated to, that means that people don't care. And that simply hasn't been the case, and I know that. I've talked with several commissioners, county staff, the county attorney, countless folks throughout the state, and it's something we're trying to work through. There's just so many legal issues that are really binding us up with this situation. But through a little bit of urgency, you know, miraculously today, we did start getting communication from EnviroLink. They communicated to me today, and will be communicating on a daily basis to the county staff so that they can put information out to the community, letting folks know what's being done every single day at Eagle Creek. If they fix one tower, they fix one tower. If they fix 10, that's great. If they worked on the collection system or the vacuum system, whatever they did, they're gonna be communicating that, which is, I don't know why, but that was a big hurdle, and it shouldn't have been a big hurdle. But it was. So, what I got from them today was just an update over the last 30 days. They've installed 81 pedestals, and I think by now, everybody knows what a pedestal is and what it does. They're really concentrating on the Eagleton Circle and the Greenview Road area that seem to be the most problematic. Eagleton Circle, all have been done except two. One resident declined the pedestal, they didn't like the way it looked. And the other one, what is a legal issue of some kind, and they're working through that with an engineer. So, progress is being made. We're gonna stay on top of it. They're emailing me as well as the county, so I know what's happening there every single day, and we're gonna come to a resolution on this. It isn't gonna happen overnight. I will tell you that DEQ got frustrated, the regional and the state level. They did go to the AG's office and asked to implement some type of fines. That was implemented. It did no good. Sandler was not even phased by that. So, in conversations with DEQ, came back to the AG's office, and today, they had a hearing in Pasquotank County. And the judge did not sanction them or implement any type of an order, but did require them to get together with DEQ and come up with a resolution by December 20th. They have another hearing on December 20th. The same judge is gonna be there. He requested, and Ike, if you can help me with what that's called, when the judge wants to keep control of the situation, what is that called?
Bottom line, the judge kept the matter before him so that if there's a need for a hearing, it will come back before him wherever he is assigned.
Right. So, he's aware of the situation, so we're not starting at ground zero again. So, people understand the urgency and the need to get this taken care of. So, on December 20th, they'll have that hearing. If the judge is satisfied, they'll move forward with the resolution and continue to get that resolution taken care of. If the judge isn't satisfied, he will hold Sandler in contempt. And, you know, with contempt comes higher fines, possibility of jail time, you know, really trying to really ramp up the need to get this taken care of. It's gone on way too far. The pictures I see, the stories I hear are just horrific. DEQ is bound very strictly on what they can and can't do. There's been talk of condemning the system. If you condemn the system, you're condemning the houses. People have to move out of those houses. It's the last thing we want. So, folks are working on it. They really are, and I really want the community to know that this isn't going unnoticed, and it isn't something that we're just sweeping underneath the rug. So, I think everyone's really come together and understands what's going on. And like I said, they're sending me information every day. We're gonna monitor. I'm gonna stay in communication with the county. We're gonna hold their feet to the fire. We're gonna make sure this gets taken care of. And if the board has anything they want to offer as far as any other updates or whatever, happy to talk about that, or if you have any questions for me or any homework, I'm happy to do that.
I just wanna say one thing. I used to own a home in there. I used to own a home in there in the mid-2000s to 2011, and there was issues with the system then, not nearly to this level.
Right.
And the problem, and I'll say this, and I know it's recorded, and there was no maintenance done on the thing is the problem. And everybody knows that, and that's the hardest thing where we've had, this board not arguments, where we've discussed, you know, I mean, if you don't maintain something, if you don't change the oil in your truck for two years, it's gonna have problems. And, I mean, like I said, and that is, and that falls back on Sandler. I mean, EnviroLink, and I'm not taking it for nobody, they inherited a mess, to be blunt and politically correct.
They absolutely inherited a mess.
And like you said, and the fines, you know, towards Sandler, I mean, you know, and I don't know if there's something more that DEQ can do or whatever, because it's, I mean, you know, how do you have Thanksgiving dinner? I actually talked to three people about it after the Christmas parade while I was picking up stuff, and, you know, they were telling me the different, you know, which, I mean, I used to own a home in there, so I know half of the people that live in there, maybe two-thirds or three-quarters.
I'm sure you knew all of them.
Probably, probably. But, I mean...
Wild guess.
Yeah. But, I mean, like you said, it is, it's, I mean, like, it's, I hope the courts, and we do have a meeting on the 20th, so we will be able to give some sort of status after that. I hope the courts, you know, do something and hold the person that built it, that owns it accountable.
And I firmly believe that they will. I know that they know what they're up against. And I know that, you know, if you go back with a little bit of history, maybe 2009, 2010 is when problems really started happening there. When I chaired the board in 2017, myself, Dan, I think Ike was there, and Eric Weatherly met with the community association, and, you know, they asked us to take it over, and what's it gonna cost? And, you know, we told them, we gotta bring this thing up to standard. If it's gonna be a utility that the county's gonna maintain, then we need to bring it up to a standard. And, you know, we offered that standard to them in 2017, and I don't know if it was an HOA decision or if it was, you know, the executive committee, but, you know, they just declined the offer. So, we can't afford that. Our owners aren't gonna pay that fee. And I'm really going off the top of my head with it. I think it was $61 more a month, which, you know, is a lot of money, but given the circumstances where we are today, it might not have been as bad. So, that's where we are with that, and I agree with you, no maintenance being done. I know that Sandler took a 15% rate increase roughly the 2015 timeframe, and has basically done nothing, absolutely nothing, and that's unacceptable. And we really need to, really need to hold Sandler accountable, and, you know, I think EnviroLink is trying to do the right thing. You know, the difficulty with it is, is it's all under purchase. So, Sandler doesn't wanna do something because they're selling the property. Well, Sandler doesn't understand that sale isn't going through until the system gets brought up to standard, because utilities just aren't gonna allow that to happen. So, somewhere down the line, Sandler has to come to the plate and have to do the right thing.
I've been in correspondence with several in there the last few days and got a report from a resident who, in the month of November, was without sewer service 42% of the days. And since January 21st, he's been 55 total days without sewer, but he's still paying his full bill, just like everybody in there's doing it. And I know that several in there have filed complaints with the AG's office on the fraud division.
Yep. And, you know, with my business, I'm always riding through there, so I'm always seeing the construction, seeing what's going on, talking to people, and just kinda keep my eyes on things. But I do know that, talked with the county manager, and we have a mechanism, I believe, in place to try to relay information as we get it, to try to get it to the Eagle Creek residents as best we can, because I know it focuses with them, and I believe we still have that.
Yes, you and I had a telephone conference several weeks ago with a citizen in Eagle Creek, and she ended up providing us with, I guess, an email address that, I guess, is broadcast throughout the community. So, we'll start forwarding EnviroLink's reports as we receive them to that email address.
And that's, I was told, too, and this was, I mean, from a reliable source, that EnviroLink, like, whatever the state put in when they had the meetings with the DEQ, that Sandler had to do A, B, C, and D, and EnviroLink has, you know, went, you know, to E, F, and G, and, you know, done more. You know, like I said, it's still not working properly, but I was told that Mr. Myers has almost a half a million dollars out of his own money, because he's trying to fix it, you know, for multiple reasons, for the residents as well as for future.
And EnviroLink has invested quite a bit of money of their own to get the system up to par. But again, their hands have been tied as far as dollars and what Sandler's been willing to do. I can tell you that update that I got this afternoon was that Sandler has committed to give you, give them all the parts they need to make the system whole. And as fast as the parts come in, EnviroLink will be putting them in. Miraculous how that happened today. Just saying.
Hours after they were caught.
Yeah.
But progress is being made, and I understand, and for you folks out there, I know it's frustrating, and we get it. Trust me, we get it. And I think we're doing everything that we can, so please understand that. To all the folks out there, any issues you have continuing on, feel free to call me. My cell number is 252-207-5479. Call me anytime. I go to bed early, I get up early, so don't call after 8:00. You'll get a voicemail for sure. I won't be staying to the end of this meeting.
Right.
We'll slide out. Oh, he already slid out. That's pretty good. That's pretty good. But, yeah, we're there, and if you wanna email me stuff, pictures, whatever, bobby.hanig@nclg.gov, send whatever. We wanna help y'all, and we wanna get this resolution taken care of as quickly as possible, so y'all are whole and we can keep doing good things for the county. So, thank you.
Of all the things that I've ever dealt with as a county commissioner, this has been the most frustrating, because our hands have been tied everywhere we turn, and I know your hands have been tied. And I think it points out a weakness in our structure of law in North Carolina that needs to be addressed and hopefully will.
Right. Get some good legislators up there, we'll get it done.
Right. Hopefully, they can sign up for the job.
Any further questions or anything? I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. I know the citizens appreciate that. Merry Christmas to you, sir.
And he didn't have to stay.
Okay, well, next, the item is the Item C, TeleVate Presentation of the County Public Safety Radio System Analysis and Recommendations, and I believe Mary Beth is gonna be doing that presentation for us this evening.
Do some of that, and then I'll let somebody else talk, so you don't have to listen to my froggy voice. Good evening, I'm Mary Beth Noons, I'm the Director of Currituck County Emergency Management and 911. I'm here to introduce Dominic Arcuri, I practiced that and practiced that, I still didn't get it, from TeleVate. TeleVate was awarded a contract with the county to assess the current radio system and provide recommendations for future planning. Now that that study's been complete, Dom will present their findings. As we started planning for our new public safety building, we were continuing to have problems with our current radio to have problems with our current radio system. It seemed to be getting worse. Uh, we have several parts of our system that are at their end of their life. Um, and while other areas, uh, we have tree growth issues. And, um, on one of the towers that goes across the, um, sound, we have issues with that tower. Our tower vendor was advising us of some very costly changes to go along with the new equipment that we needed for the, the new location. It was enough to, for us to decide, um, to put the brakes on, to take a step back and really assess the system and get a second opinion. We wanted to be sure that the proposed way forward was going to ensure a radio system that provided optimal safety and reliability for our responders, longevity of the system core, and the functionality or cap, uh, capacity that fit our county. So I'll turn it over to Dom, so he can do his presentation, and then I'll wrap it up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Beth, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. I do have a presentation, as Mary Beth indicated, to, uh, review our, our findings and go over the recommendations. And, uh, happy to answer any questions as I go through this. Please, please feel free. Yeah, I guess I can control, right? Uh, just briefly, I'm gonna go over what the project scope was. Mary Beth gave you a little bit of an overview. Uh, we took signal measurements and measured the coverage within the county, and we did an analysis of the microwave links, and I'll talk a little bit about what, what that is. Uh, we'll some, I'll summarize the key findings and then go through the recommendations. Again, just briefly, we put together a project plan to handle the, handle the project. Uh, we did a thorough review of the existing equipment, the existing system and its capabilities, so we understood, uh, what type of system, of course, and where it is in its, uh, lifecycle. Uh, we interviewed a number of different representatives from first responder agencies throughout the county. We got their input, we, we interviewed them both, uh, over the, over the phone, uh, video calls, as well as onsite, uh, discussions as well. Uh, we did perform an analysis of the coverage, what we, what we felt it should be, based on theoretical input, and then we measured, uh, specific coverage as well. And then we developed the recommendations. So just, uh, an overview here of what, uh, your current system, uh, looks like. It's, uh, what we call a five-site, uh, system. You'll see six sites, uh, on here as the, uh, we also show the, the 911, um, uh, center here, of course. Uh, the other five sites are five, uh, towers. Uh, they're essentially antenna locations, uh, either, either towers or an elevated water tank that, uh, broadcasts the information. This is a five-site system. We call it simulcast, uh, because it's simultaneously broadcast. So all five of those towers are broadcasting the identical information at the same time in an effort to cover the entire county with wireless coverage for our first responders. And the, uh, 911 center, of course, is linked into that system because it communicates directly with the system through the, uh, dispatch consoles that the dispatch operators use. And, uh, the links that are shown between these sites, that's the, those are the, that's the microwave network, or those are the microwave links between the sites, 'cause all the sites need to communicate with each other, because, as I mentioned, the same information goes out on all, uh, five sites. So the microwave is essentially a point-to-point link, uh, between each of those sites.
Can I, how about like the dead spot? I don't know if, I'm a lieutenant at the sheriff's office, and I've worked for the sheriff's office for twenty years.
That's it.
Um, three or four spots, like, up towards the Virginia Line, I'm not gonna say neighborhoods, I know where we have some issues, and one of them, it's, uh, and depending on your cellphone carrier, there's some issues in there too, where in the past we've had, uh, as well as down by Fox Knoll, a little bit south of that, we've had some issues.
Yes.
All the dead spots, like inside a Southland restaurant, the radio, you can hear it and you respond, and it says nothing. You say, "Copy," whatever. Um, all those dead spots, those been, I'd say there's about seven in the whole county, some in Corova as well, and those have been addressed?
Uh, well, I'll, I'll, I'll review those and identify what we found when we did the signal measurements. And then I'll provide some recommendations as to how to, uh, improve those. Uh, this is just another, another look here where I show, uh, the same, uh, five sites, the same five sites here, um, as well as additional sites. The ones in red are sites from the, uh, North Carolina State Patrol, uh, Viper Network. If you're familiar with that, it's a statewide, uh, public safety network operated by the, uh, uh, by the state. Uh, they have one site within the county here at Barco. It's actually uses the same tower as one of the, uh, five sites that the county uses. Uh, and they also have, uh, sites in surrounding counties here, one in Kitty Hawk, down in Derrick County, and a couple to the east as well. Uh, so while we were, uh, driving around making our signal measurements for the county system, we also measured the performance of the, uh, state, uh, Viper system at the same time. And, uh, the county uses the state system on, on occasion, uh, for, for backup or other So this is, uh, a, a view of the signal measurements that we recorded. Uh, we were in the county two separate occasions, uh, you'll see here once in April and then once again in August, to measure the signal level. And you'll see, uh, the, uh, along the roads, this is essentially where we drove and where we measured signal. And you'll see the different colors, and, uh, it's not red and green for Christmas time. Uh, that's just shown such that, uh, a little bit about, uh, our, our performance here. The, the green is good coverage, uh, the red is not, uh, not good coverage, essentially. So we show different levels here. Uh, the, uh, the green is, uh, the darker green is the best. And what we're measuring is the coverage from the infrastructure to the user in the field. The user in the field is most likely wearing a portable radio. The portable radio is probably on his or her hip. So it's down here, the antenna is down here. So we, we measure that to, uh, coverage at that level. Uh, and then, uh, there can be coverage, what we call on-street. So that means outside, if the user's outside, it's easier to provide coverage on-street. The user may go in a building, obviously, and then there's attenuation to the signal from the building structure. Uh, so we measure both on-street, in-building, and then we also measure what we call mobile coverage. And mobile coverage would be mobile to, uh, coverage to a mobile radio. So instead of the portable worn on the hip, uh, there's, uh, mobile radios in the, in the vehicles, in the, in the fire apparatus, in the police cruisers, and they are higher-power radio. They have an antenna generally on the roof, so they have better antenna characteristics. You generally get broader coverage from a tower when you go to the mobile radio as opposed to a portable radio.
So the lack of any data in the April 2021 for north of Corolla's Tower, is that because we didn't drive it?
We did not have the opportunity to do so at that date. That's correct. Uh, we did, uh, have the opportunity in August, and you'll see the data there, uh, during that timeframe. Uh, we also recorded in August some of the same data that we recorded in April, and we confirmed a lot of the, a lot of the same areas. Uh, there were a lot of reports recently of poor coverage in Corolla Beach area, and that's why we made a point to make that, uh, a second, uh, drive test and record the data in that area. Uh, so, uh, you'll see the, the weaker areas are the areas in, in red. Down here, of course, this is outside the county, uh, down here near the bridge and near Kitty Hawk. Of course, that's outside the county, but a lot of the responders, of course, would take that route to get to the Outer Banks. Uh, in the Grandi area, that's, uh, one of the weaker areas as well. Generally, there's poor building coverage in that area.
That's right where the fire station is, right there.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, that's right where the fire station is, right there. So that's poor coverage right there at the fire station? Wow.
Uh, there, there is.
There's about Walnut Island.
There is poor coverage in that area, yes. Uh, and then, and then out towards the, uh, northwestern part, uh, of the county as well, there's poor coverage out here.
That's in Carolina Village, on Backwoods Road, there's a bunch of spots too.
So from a methodology perspective, okay, was there a reason you drove some areas in April and then you didn't drive them in August? For example, none of the Moayok area appears that you did drive coverage?
Right. The, the primary goal in August was to get the data in the northern Outer Banks area on Corolla Beach.
Okay.
That was the primary goal. And, and we did find that, uh, coverage is, uh, what I'll call spotty, uh, in this area. Uh, somewhat surprising, uh, to be honest, uh, given the, uh, proximity to the, uh, Nats Island Tower, which is right here. Uh, so we would expect to see better coverage in that area, and I'll talk a little bit about that.
Mary Beth, did, does Corolla's Tower not play into this at all?
No. Corolla is not currently used as a tower for the county system. Any other questions?
But most of the deaths, but most of the dead spots are further up, up the beach. They're not, it's actually better the deeper you get into Corolla than it is. Like about a Laughing Cove, there's a couple of dead spots.
Any other questions or comments? Just also show, I mentioned we recorded a signal measurements for the Viper system as well. Uh, so that has, uh, showed similar results here. Uh, there are areas certainly where the, uh, coverage is poorer. Uh, again, there's a, a kind of a weak area in Grandi. Uh, there is better coverage, of course, down, down here along the bridge, because there's a site in Kitty Hawk. Uh, there is also better coverage from Viper out in the northeastern, or northwestern, I'm sorry, northwestern part of the county, uh, you know, beyond Moayok, uh, because of this tower over here. Uh, and again, this shared, uh, Viper shares, uh, a tower here at the Barco site. So we did make those measurements as well. Uh, this shows a comparison of the measurements, which you see on the left, and a simulation of what we would expect coverage to be, uh, with the image on the right. Uh, so we have a, a propagation simulation tool that we use. We input the data from the system, the, where the locations of the towers are, the height of the antennas, the type of the antennas, uh, the transmit power, et cetera. And we simulate that, uh, to show what type of coverage we would expect. Uh, so you'll, you'll see, again, uh, red is good. Uh, red is, is weaker coverage, white is no, uh, essentially no coverage at all. Uh, so we do see the, uh, the weak areas here in the northwestern part. We do see some, uh, weaker areas in the Grandi area, uh, also along the bridge. Uh, one thing which does not correlate well is, uh, the simulation shows that there should be, uh, reasonably good coverage, uh, in Corolla Beach and in the northern part of the, uh, the Outer Banks. And, uh, that was, uh, somewhat consistent with what we heard from the users. They indicated that coverage was generally, uh, good throughout most of the county, especially when it was first installed. Uh, but it seems that, uh, coverage has degraded, uh, over time. Uh, so also, we analyzed the, uh, the microwave network, and if you recall, one of the earlier slides, the microwave network shows, uh, a total of, uh, six microwave links that connect the towers together, as well as the, uh, the tower, uh, right outside here, uh, near the, uh, the 911 center. Uh, so of course, they all need to communicate, uh, for a, uh, a comprehensive, uh, system. And there have been numerous, uh, problems with the microwave, with the microwave system. Uh, there have been, uh, equipment failures, there have been some instances where the link did not, uh, is not solid, uh, is not consistently, uh, providing data. Uh, so there were serious problems with, uh, with the microwave, uh, system. Uh, the microwave was, and if you can bear with me, I'll go back a, a bit real quick. Uh, the microwave system is intentionally designed in, in a loop situation here, so you'll see that it goes all the way around and it's, uh, closed in a loop situation. So if one particular link, uh, say the link from Fox Knoll to Barco, if this were interrupted for some reason, uh, the system could still communicate with all the towers, it would have to go in the other direction around the link. And that's, uh, that's typical of the way a public safety system is done. Um, so it does give some reliability, uh, but there have been numerous instances of, uh, microwave, uh, difficulties. Again, uh, both, uh, you can, you can see in these images here where the signal is dropping out, and it shows here the, uh, data, uh, throughput drops out as well, so it's not providing, it's not providing, uh, the connection necessary which would, uh, inhibit coverage in some of those areas. Uh, this one particular link, uh, the one from Fox Knoll to Corolla, uh, was one of the problem areas, and, uh, this shows the, uh, what's, what's shown as a path profile of that link. Uh, a, a large portion of that, of course, is over water. And, uh, there are, uh, there can, can be problems with reflection of, of microwave links over water, and we anticipate that's what's occurring here and causing problems with the, uh, with the link.
Is there any deviation from those readings with daylight or nighttime hours, or is that pretty much consistent twenty-four hours?
Uh, pretty, pretty consistent throughout the day. So these are the key, uh, findings, uh, that, uh, that we recorded and are described in our, uh, report. Uh, we touched on, uh, on a lot of them here. Microwave connectivity is definitely, uh, a, uh, an issue, uh, causing, uh, data dropouts, causing problems which, of course, uh, result in, uh, interruptions of communications. Uh, the radio coverage, uh, problems, uh, the coverage isn't, is not, uh, what we would typically, uh, propose to cover for a public safety system, and it appears to have degraded over time. Uh, so that gives us concern, gives us pause. Uh, one of the, a couple of operational issues, uh, we found out, uh, that, uh, the system has a limited number of channels. So it has, it uses four channels, four communication paths, uh, essentially. So that's, uh, the system that is capable of carrying on four different conversations, uh, four frequency pairs. Uh, there's a lack of, uh, what we call a repeated channel, uh, for communicating instances or, or, uh, with incidents. Uh, so normally, one channel is used for, uh, dispatch of, uh, first responders. Likely, there's, uh, channel used for dispatch of law enforcement, another channel used for dispatch, uh, fire and EMS personnel. Uh, and then when, during an ongoing incident, uh, they need to talk amongst each other. Normally, a different channel is used, uh, for that. Uh, and when there are incidents is where, uh, you require, uh, support, mutual aid support. Uh, for instance, in the northern part, uh, possibly from, uh, Virginia Beach or Chesapeake, uh, there needs to be communication between all those agencies so that they can coordinate the activities. Uh, and also in the southern part, potentially from Derrick County, et cetera. Uh, so there needs to be additional, uh, repeated channels with the system. Uh, jumping to the later one, also in an operational standpoint, uh, the system is what we call a conventional operation, conventional system. Uh, conventional system is similar to what you would be used to for walkie-talkie. Uh, if a radio talks to another radio on a given frequency. And, uh, there are more advanced systems, it's called a trunking. A trunking system, uh, is a more efficient way to, uh, operate a limited number of channels. It takes all the channels, channels and combines them into a pool, and then a given channel is allocated based on requests for communication. Uh, you do not have a trunking system, uh, such as the Viper system, for example. Uh, it's a conventional system. And, and one of the key points there is, in a trunking system, uh, there's one channel that's used to control the operations. It's called the control channel. Uh, so when, uh, a radio user's out in the field, their radio is always communicating with the system over the control channel. So that gives us, us the advantage that that radio knows when it's in coverage and when it's not in coverage. Currently, uh, one of the complaints we got from some of the users, the current system, when they go out of coverage, they don't know that they, whether or not they can talk back to. of coverage, they don't know whether or not they can talk back to dispatch. They don't know if their communication is going to be heard. They don't have any way of knowing if they're in coverage. With a trunking system, they would know that. The radio would essentially communicate to them. The radio would beep if it goes out of range of the control channel. So that's one difference between those types of systems. And then also, the infrastructure is somewhat out of date. It has not been updated recently. So the hardware and the software are at a previous release, not the current release. And they're certainly not a software agreement with the manufacturer. So to address these key findings and the issues that we identified within the system, we provided a number of, and I'll review here, both short-term actions and then potential enhancements. So these are recommended short-term actions. These are actions that we recommend you take in order to bring the system up to a reliable public safety system. Number one is to correct the microwave issues and the RF performance issues, or the RF, radio frequency performance, or the coverage issues. Again, it appears that coverage has degraded over time. And it is possible that some of the equipment has degraded, either the antennas on the towers, the communication lines, the cables from the equipment at the base of the tower up to the antennas.
Can I interrupt and ask you a question? When you said some of the equipment's not, I mean, is it due to weather? Is it due to, I mean, what's the, I mean, just, I mean...
It could be due to, yes. Of course, being a coastal county, due to corrosion, that could certainly be one of the factors. Yes. There could be what we call intermodulation issues, or issues where some of the frequencies interfere with each other. That can occur if some of the equipment is degraded as well. So we would recommend a thorough analysis of the existing equipment, as well as a review of the microwave network. The existing vendor has done some review of the microwave network and has proposed a replacement network. That's one of the options shown here under action number one. You'll see that it has several cost estimates there. So the base cost estimate is approximately $326,000. That's for the basic review of the RF equipment. And for replacement of at least one of the microwave links, the most severe issue that is readily occurring, as well as getting a stock of spare equipment for the microwave system. Now you see that there's other options up to going to the complete microwave replacement. Action two is further address the coverage issues. So once the microwave system is repaired and is reliable, then a timing analysis is recommended to make sure that the system is timed correctly such that it doesn't essentially interfere with itself. That could be cause of some of the coverage issues. And then finally, action three, we recommend addressing the issue of insufficient number of channels for communications of the different first responder agencies.
Sir, my bad. Because my friend here, trying to read that, is that chart in our package?
It is. It's on page 11.
Is it? Okay, thanks.
It's part of the presentation. It's also in the report.
Oh, here it is. Don't wait for me. I'll...
No, continue.
Go ahead. All right. In addition to these recommended actions, we have also identified some potential enhancement options. So those recommended actions, we feel, need to be taken in order to ensure the integrity of the public safety radio system here. In addition to that, there are additional enhancements that could provide more capability and provide you with a better base of equipment moving forward. And these are shown here. There's five of the options. Some of them address the same issue. So you wouldn't do all five of these. You might do option one or option two, for example. Or if you did option three, that would eliminate the need for one and two as well. But obviously, there are varying estimated costs here. So there are substantial costs to performing these options. I'll specifically note option three and option four. I mentioned the difference between a conventional system and a trunking system. Option three would migrate the system to a trunked system, a more advanced type of communication system, provides additional capability, additional features, and also solves the issue of the lack of repeated channels for communication between agencies. Similarly, option four does a similar thing. Option four actually addresses potentially partnering with the state and utilizing the, what we call the Viper network, the North Carolina Viper network. So it would be essentially upgrading your system and integrating it in with the state's system. There could be long-term advantages in doing that. And we discussed those in the report as well. Any questions on any of these?
That's a lot of shit for the Viper one. And I've used the Viper a lot of times. And that's, I don't know.
What we're proposing for that particular option, sir, is to maintain your coverage today. So essentially, upgrade four out of your five sites. Since there's a common site in Barco, I would recommend, we recommend upgrading the other four sites and then integrating in with Viper. So you get the benefits of having broader coverage from the additional Viper sites. You maintain your existing coverage from the five-site simulcast system you have. And you also have the advantage of having the state maintain the system moving forward. Any other questions? So essentially, as I said going through this, we've identified actions, three actions, which we identify as recommended. You need to do those. And then there's further options on top of those. And the options are somewhat interrelated. So again, we recommend looking at either option three or four for enhanced functionality and long-term viability, interoperability, et cetera. And these are all explained. The interrelation between those are explained in the report. And we can certainly provide additional information as necessary. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
So you said the state, we want the Viper system, they would maintain that system? Or they would maintain their tower for that system?
That requires some communications and negotiations with the state. They do have options to partner with counties, to, once you install the infrastructure that you need to provide your coverage, they do have options to essentially take over that equipment and then maintain it moving forward. And then they would be responsible for ongoing upgrades and so on. We've seen that work very effectively in other states, in a number of other states that we work with across the country. So there are pros and cons to doing that. There would certainly be, you know, more discussion required. But we would, you know, propose that as one option to consider.
Okay, thank you. Throw in like a free Reynolds Wrap headband that we can wear to make, I'm just kidding, to make them work better.
Mary Beth, is the intention to, because in here it's relocate the Kurutuk 911 tower, aren't we adding, aren't we just adding another tower? Well, the tower that's here will no longer be used. So we'll need to add a new tower over at the new 911 center.
So this one will actually be taken down?
Unless somebody finds another purpose for it.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would essentially mean, you know, this site here, this would move a little bit, I guess, southwest, right around here in Maple area.
How many users were contacted on the different, from the EMS, the fire, the deputies, the, Mary Beth, or either one of you guys, if you're, how many different, half a dozen?
It was about a couple dozen people we talked to, yes.
All right, thank you.
One question. How much time, if we did option one and two, how much time would that buy us before we had to take a more long-term approach?
One and two, that would probably buy you several years, three to five years or so.
Thank you.
My wife's one of the 911 operators. And it's very frustrating, concerning for them when they are trying to talk to law enforcement officers, or EMS personnel, or fire personnel, and they lose communication. And I know there's been several times in the last year, she comes home frustrated because the system went down and trying to work around it some way.
Yes. I would estimate that that's most likely due to the microwave issues, microwave failures that have occurred several times over the past year.
This summer was a lot.
There is backup capability, but it's a different type of communication for them to communicate with the users when that happens. They have to switch to one of their backup radios in order to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have they made a project timeline? One of the things that we found out was that our vendor, our radio vendor wasn't that far off. So it's a big price tag. So going back over the key findings, our microwave connectivity is bad. Our radio coverage is not very good. Our lack of repeated channels, our outdated core, and lack of indication when a user is out of range. So literally, they hit that button, and on a trunked system, it'll chirp at you. And you know that your transmission is going out. And the recommended actions, which the staff agrees on, are to correct those microwave issues, to address the coverage issues, and then bring before the board the hopeful transition to trunking. We've broken this out into phases, which is shown on the timeline. We'll need to start moving the 911 center in first. The North Carolina 911 Board originally mandated that all 911 centers will be utilized, will utilize something called ESINet by July 1, 2021. We were able to get an extension to March 31, 2022. And if we don't meet that deadline, the 911 funds that we rely on could be held up. So what is ESINet? ESINet is the Emergency Services IP Network. And in very basic terms, it gives us the ability to answer 911 calls anywhere in the state. It connects all the centers together. The system, of course, takes equipment and phone lines that the 911 Board is paying for. The county has no financial dealings with that at all. But if we cannot meet the deadline and be in the new facility, we'll have to actually install it here at our current site. And then the county will have to pay to have it moved over to the new site. We've found some cost-effective ways to maintain radio communications while we continue the next phases of the upgrade. Moving into the new site is going to require furniture, of course, the radio equipment, the phone equipment, and computer workstations. These will be primarily funded with our current 911 fund balance and the recent approval of additional 911 funds totaling just under $815,000. These additional funds must be used prior to June 30, 2022. Next, the best utilize, I'm sorry, I'm going to make it through. To best utilize the proposed new tower and the effectiveness of adding two additional booster sites, we need to have a PATH study completed. The study can determine if we're able to get enough height out of the new tower. And then we'll be taking into consideration things like development and tree growth and things like that. After the PATH study, it's imperative that we begin working on this microwave issue. The current system has reached its end of life and is failing routinely, putting our responders at risk. They need to be able to rely on their emergency radio traffic. The microwave portion of the system is at its end of life, meaning getting parts repaired and/or new parts is very difficult and time-consuming. The final part of the project will be the radio system itself. A decision needs to be made whether to remain the current conventional system, which we've outgrown. We can take that system and add two additional channels, which will outgrow in five years. Or we can go ahead and make the leap into trunked. The difference between the two, I think, is best compared to a road toll. In a conventional system, you have to stay in your designated lane. No matter how many other vehicles are in that lane, you have to stay there. And you have to wait your turn. Meanwhile, the other lanes may just have a few cars or no cars. In a trunked system, you're able to choose whichever lane is free. And so you have faster communication. It just goes that much quicker. You don't have to wait in line. So there's not a law enforcement lane and a fire EMS lane. You just pick the quickest way to get through the toll. Another good analogy is thinking of a conventional system as an intersection, a traffic intersection. When you get to the intersection, if the light is green, you'll go. But if you have to stop because it's red, you're stopped. And then the trunked system is more like the roundabouts. So you never really stop on those roundabouts. You just pick which lane you want to pull off on and you continue to go. So it's much more fluid when you're going through the trunked process. Another one of the safety features, well, we already talked about the audible tone. I prepared the project timeline to show approximately how long each phase will take. So, I mean, even if we started a little bit later or a little bit sooner, the time span that it takes is pretty much on track. If that makes sense.
So we can meet that timeline for the, was it, the 911?
ESINet?
Yeah, yes.
Yes. If we go ahead and move into comms, that first little bar there, we could be in by March, using those alternate methods to keep our radio system working while we're waiting for the radio system to be repaired.
That is our first goal, is to get central communications moved from here over to the new public safety building.
So we don't lose that funding, yeah.
Well, that's correct. And so to help enhance that, Logan Stees, our IT director, has also been able to figure out a path to get us connectivity to fiber, to fiber network in order for us to connect back here to this facility, once they move over to public safety. And so you'll be seeing that they're going to be acquiring furniture for the new central communications area, consoles and other equipment that's required for them to actually get there up and running. And then we'll be rolling into another phase will be, after the PATH study, will be the construction, location construction of the new tower, along with the microwave additions then to follow, to enhance that part of the system. And as Mary Beth said, then be another decision-making point for this board to determine if we're going to maintain our conventional system with the addition of some more channels or whether we're going to go into the trunking system, which of course is more expensive. But that's a decision the board will need to make.
Do we have, is this stuff, the equipment and all that already lined up? I mean, for purchasing, we're not going to be, I mean, like everything else out there, there's delays in getting it.
That's why the timeline is so big, because they, they will need to, they actually make the equipment, they put it, they set it all up in their factory, and they test it to make sure it works properly, and then they wrap it all back up and ship it. So they have gone ahead and started, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to tell this or not, but they, the radio vendor has gone ahead and started building out the console equipment for the 911 center, so that they are sure to meet that March date. So without contract in hand, they are took a leap of faith to jump out there and start workings.
And they're at risk?
They are.
So in looking at this, ballpark 6.4 million? In the next year?
Yes, sir.
Almost a million of that is.
And what, I don't see, Sandra, what's in our budget right now of that 6.4?
Well, some, some of this we have identified, again, the 911 funding of $815,000 is going to be paid, funding the cons, the consoles and, and.
Okay, so that takes us down to 5.8.
And then we do have money identified that's been carried over in a line item for construction of the tower. So that.
Well, that was for two towers, right?
It may have been for two, but we only, believe that we only need one. That's all the plan is, to construct one new tower. And then there's some, is there some more 911 money?
Yes, we have a, we have a grant that we're using. We were supposed to use it for the towers, but we're not going to be able to use that money before the deadline of the grant. So I'm working with the 911 Board to either go ahead and end that grant and, and just kind of cash out and reapply for this year's grant. But that's what I plan to do, is reapply for the 911 Board grant.
And ballpark, what's the grant for?
That will be, let's see, I haven't done any of that paperwork yet. So it'd be any of the, the tower site building that we need to do. So we're, we're not only building that site, we're setting up two booster sites. So one's going to go on a, a water tower, so we'll need the, the infrastructure there. And then we're going to rent a space, a space on the Shaburo Tower that's behind the school, and we've got a nice high spot on there that they agreed to give us a really good rate on.
And who's that by? Who owns that tower?
Crown.
Okay. So not our favorite tower vendor?
No.
All right, so anyway, the grant, I mean, what I'm trying to find out is, what's not covered? What, what is the new bill to the county for comms? Because lord knows, I've heard all of the challenges that we're facing at the FIAB.
I don't have that number for you.
Okay.
Yet. Because the, the grant cycle isn't here yet, so to reapply, I just, I don't feel comfortable saying, because sometimes they change the criteria of the grants.
Okay, all right.
I will get that to you as soon as I can.
Well, I mean, ballpark, I'm guessing three, impact in the next year.
Not sure about the next year, but it could be ballpark in that, that range.
Well, according to this timeline, it's the next year.
Well, but, well, for example, the tower, we, we know it's going to take some design time and then construction time. So, I mean, some of, some of these.
Are aggressive?
Funds may shift.
Optimistic, overly, overly optimistic?
Certainly in the early phases, I think, are.
Okay.
The biggest thing was we got to get the move to comms by March 30th.
Like I said, as long as we do that, a lot of that is almost 75% is paid for, if we get it, meet the deadline. Owen will volunteer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your time tonight. What's that?
Any other questions?
Yeah.
More than anything?
Mr. Chairman.
If we went with the new microwave system, what is expected life? Do we have any projected lifespan on that?
They're telling me about 15 years.
15 years.
Any other questions?
Any questions for the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just say one more thing, I would like to thank the commissioners, I would like to thank my Currituck County family, staff, for all the support for my family. And I live in a wonderful, wonderful community that's full of very loving people. And my husband and I, and my children can't thank you enough for, for reaching out to us and all your prayers. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to take a about, I don't know, five or 10 minute, what's the board think, a recess for break? Is it five good or we need 10?
30, 45.
Yeah, okay, let's get, um, let's, let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess and reconvene here shortly. Okay, well, I'm going to reconvene our regular meeting, and the next item is going to be a public hearings, item A. No, Paul's is, it pauses later on, new business. No, 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 no. Under public hearings, PB 90-07 Pine Island Phase 5B, request for amended preliminary plat special use permit to approve an additional unit of density in the form of an upper story dwelling unit over the cabana amenity, and to designate a small commercial area within Pine Island PUD. This is going to be a quasi-judicial hearing, so anyone who wishes to speak on this matter, please come forward and, and find a Bible, and if you could place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Could you solemn swear that the evidence and the information provided would be the truth, whole truth, not above the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, I believe Ms. Turner has this, this evening?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. This is, this is a request to amend currently approved preliminary plat special use permit for a 23-lot subdivision in Pine Island in Phase 5B to add an additional unit of density over the proposed cabana. You do have a worksheet that was left for you, the evidence here, hearing worksheet. The board decides to, to make TRC comments, conditions of approval, there's a statement to that effect, that you, that can save you some time in reciting those conditions when we get to that point. So the applicant Turnpike Properties is making this request. Here's the aerial photography of the site. You're probably familiar with the site, you've seen it a few times here, most recently in October.
Doesn't look like that anymore, Jim.
Sure, yeah, this is, this is old aerial photography. I think it's 2020 aerial photography. So you can see Hampton Inn to the north, the airstrip to the west, and some of Pine Island residential dwellings to the south, and of course, the ocean to the east. Zoning is amended sketch plan, I'm sorry, the zoning is single-family outer banks with PUD overlay, and the property is subject to the amended sketch plan for Pine Island, with the most recent change on October 18th, when the board approved an amended sketch plan special use permit to allocate .3 acres of commercial in the area of the proposed cabana, and also allocated a unit of density for the upper story dwelling unit. The property, oh, there's your zoning. The property is full service in the land use plan in the Corolla sub-area. Currently, they do have amended sketch plan special use permit approval for 23 lots plus one upper story dwelling unit. They also have preliminary plat special use permit approval for the 23 lots, not including the additional dwelling unit over the cabana, and construction drawing approval of the subdivision, as well as a permit for construction of the cabana where the, the dwelling unit is proposed on the second level. And as you just alluded to, that, a lot of that work has already taken place with the clearing and implementation of infrastructure for the subdivision, as well as the cabana. And the applicant, again, is requesting preliminary plat special use permit approval for construction of that upper, upper story dwelling unit over the proposed cabana, and the, the little bit of commercial designation was required because of the ordinance requiring that upper story dwelling units in PUDs need to be in areas designated as commercial. Here is the outline, the, the preliminary plat that shows the infrastructure. You can see to the, I guess it would be to your left, my left as well, the cabana area that is the subject of, of this request. Here's a, a more zoomed-in version of the cabana site plan and the area that's proposed. Here's the cabana here, and then there's some of this area here is the area that was designated as commercial, to include the supporting features for the cabana and upper story dwelling unit use in that commercial area. The land use plan policies regarding housing and neighborhood policies of the 2006 land use plan include policy one regarding location and density factors, and also policy number three, HN3, regarding open space developments and compact mixed-use developments are applicable to this request. These were the comments and conditions placed on the preliminary plat when it, it came through the first time, and staff has kept these same comments for this review, that the application complies with the ordinance, that the applicant demonstrates the use will meet the use permit review standards of the ordinance. Conditions of approval necessary are side setbacks shall be a minimum of 15 feet for the principal structures, and a fee in lieu is required to be paid prior to final plat. And in reviewing this special use permit, the board may make one of these three decisions to adopt the special use permit, adopt it with conditions of approval, provided there's consent of the applicant and owner, or denial of the special use permit. And, and deciding the application, the applicant will need to show that the proposed use will meet those four review standards that are required for issuance of a special use permit. Does the board have any questions for me at this time?
Any questions? Nope, thank you. Okay, I'll ask, invite the applicant to come forward, please.
Yes.
I didn't know if you had a specific question for the applicant.
No, 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 I'm glad to know.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is John Morrison. I'm attorney with Twyford Law Firm, primarily in Moayak. I represent the applicant. About 45 days ago, we were here, a different process, but the same evidence. We had to meet the same standards. You agreed that we did. So I think I can make this very short for you, you confer with Ike, but that since you acted as a court, quasi-judicial hearing, you made findings based upon the evidence. Okay, there has been no change in anything in the last 45 days. Therefore, I am requesting you to take what's called judicial notice of what you did previously. In other words, you don't, you don't do it twice, or else you could be charged with being arbitrary and capricious. You found X 45 days ago, today you decide that it's Y, that, that, and there hasn't been anything that changed. So the process here, or, excuse me, the only reason we're here is this was originally platted as a structure which the upper story would be for storage. Subsequently, the developer has decided it would be better to have on-site management. So what was going to be storage is now an apartment for the manager. That's all. The footprint of the structure, the architecture of the structure has not changed. There was previous findings that it was in harmony with the area, that it wouldn't damage adjacent property values, et cetera. So I am asking you to take judicial notice. That is our showing, that you, you agree with what you did about 45 days ago, absent any showing that there has been any change in circumstances. And you confer through council, but I believe you can do so, and then we don't have to put on evidence that we could go out.
So I guess, I just want to verify everything is as we stated?
Well, yes, Mr. Chairman, given, again, that you just basically had a hearing on this matter 45 days ago, and I guess unless someone appears to show that there's some evidence to the contrary, a body may take judicial notice sitting in, in, in your capacity as a trial court at this point. Our appellate courts have most recently, in December of last year, spoken about the ability for a trier of fact to take judicial notice. That case, Anderson Creek Partners versus County of Harnett, provided that judicial notice is appropriate where a fact is not subject to reasonable dispute, and that it is capable of accurate and ready determination by resort to sources whose accuracy cannot be reasonably questioned. The court went on, North Carolina courts have long held that important public documents will be judicially noticed. Important public documents in this context have been held to include, among other things, a Utilities Commission order modifying a joint venture agreement, a vehicle insurance classification scheme composed by the North Carolina Rate Bureau, and contractual agreements between a Native American tribe and both the state government and private entities. So given the status of this matter tonight, I, it would be in my opinion that the board, if it is inclined to, could take judicial notice and adopt the findings of fact from the previous order that you entered 45 days ago in this matter.
Okay, well, I guess the last, this board is, anybody have any objections to taking judicial notice?
I'll make a motion so moved, we take judicial notice.
Okay.
It's going to be in the form of a motion?
Yes, and, and again, I would think, I think you should provide in the motion, again, that you're making the findings of fact as set forth in, in your order 45 days ago.
You have it, I'll second it.
For each, each of the elements that are required.
So you want to pull your motion back?
I'd like to pull.
I'm sorry, what was that?
October 18th, he said. I'll pull my so moved motion back, and I'll let.
All right, so I'll open a floor in for a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move that the, we do take judicial notice, that this is, it was previously established that the area is in harmony on the October 18th meeting, where the applicant appeared before this body.
Motion, we have a second, any further discussion on it? All in favor? Aye, unopposed? Any motion carries? Thank you. Okay, we'll take judicial notice on that.
Well, we got to do, we got to do, we have still have to go through, this is where I have to go through.
We got to do the public hearing.
Oh, well, we're not done.
Yeah, we're not.
They're done.
Yeah, but they are, so you should certainly ask if there's any evidence to the contrary, although if there is, they should be given the opportunity to cross-examine.
Well, I know, we haven't, we haven't voted on that motion yet, so I mean, I'm going to.
We just voted to accept the judicial notice, not accepting the.
I suggest at this point, go ahead and ask if there's, if there's anybody that has any evidence to present.
I guess at this time, is there anyone that has any evidence to present on this here, I guess, on PB 90-7? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and I guess open up the public comment hearing. I mean, does that?
You may.
Yeah, I mean, I'll go ahead and public hearing. I mean, we had two people signed up, and I believe they've exited. We had Wolf Blizzard signed up.
Yes, that, that's the applicant.
Yep, and then the Mike Stratter.
That's the applicant's engineer.
So they're gone. So anybody out there that didn't sign up, wanted to speak on this matter? Hey, no, I'm going to close the public hearing on this, and then I guess I'll go ahead and ask the board if we have a motion for action on this.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 90-07 Pine Island PUD Phase 5B, amended preliminary plat special use permit, because the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed use meets the review standards, and that we accept the TRC and staff-provided comments as conditions of approval. of approval, and that the use will not endanger public health or safety. The use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it was located, as previously taken notice of. The use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans, specifically policy Hotel November 1 and policy Hotel November 3. And the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities.
Are you motion? I have a second. I have a second from Commissioner Etheridge. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next item under new business is going to be, A, consideration of a guaranteed maximum price for Moayak Elementary School addition and renovation project. I believe the county manager can start that off.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before you tonight is the, I guess, the last part of a design-build process. This is the design-build amendment that establishes the guaranteed maximum price by our design-build team in the amount of, let me get them out here, $14,259,800. This is for the Moayak Elementary School renovation project. So this is now the design-build team coming to you, saying that they will do the project for this price and looking to the board for approval to get this project started. Members of the Sussex Construction, Harry Davis and Jim Vacan are here also to answer any questions that you might have, as well as Michelle Perry, Assistant County Engineer.
Are you looking for us to talk about the alternates at this time, or is that, do we need to take action on that as well tonight?
Well, you'd be taking action on the contract, which includes those alternates. If we choose during the course of the construction to adopt them, then we would do so during the course of construction at the price that are set out with each alternate.
So it looks like it's held pretty steady, yeah, through the budget process here. Any questions from the board on this, the county manager? I mean, I know it's time to take action on this tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move, we, motion that we move forward with the $14,259,800.
We have a motion for approval of that dollar figure. Do we have a second from this board?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Comments? Hearing done? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
And this is a question for Ike. If we do get started on this straight away, what is the completion date timeline?
I believe it's, is it still August 2020? August 2023 is still the same timeline. It has been discussed with the board since the beginning of the project.
All right. I didn't know if there was a delay on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is, under new business item B, discussion regarding Alamo Regional Health Services vaccination requirements for employees and impact to the current county. I believe Commissioner Beaumont wanted to add this, so I'll ask, I'll turn it over to Mr. Beaumont for his comments on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a fairly sensitive issue amongst the county, and, or at least, you know, I almost got a Kevin response relative to the policy of ARHS.
Everybody's calling me.
What's that?
Everybody's calling me.
Yeah, everybody's calling me. So a couple of things have come out. One of them was, I did receive copies of emails that were sent to specifically Battle relative to the termination of one of their employees, and it caused me great concern for several reasons. One of them has to do on the core aspect of requiring vaccinations in the first place. And it is ironic that on our agenda tonight, and the consent agenda, is a resolution that we're going to be voting on as part of the consent agenda, the title of which is Resolution in Support of Individual Freedom Over Personal Vaccination Status. And I'm going to go ahead and read this because it, because we could have pulled it out of the consent agenda and thrown it up there, but the freedom to make personal health choices is one of the most fundamental human rights protected under the Bill of Rights of the United States Constitution, and whereas informed consent is the bedrock of ethical practice in medicine, consisting of three essential elements, access to complete information, patient comprehension, and voluntariness, which is kind of an interesting word, whereas private and governmental entities across the United States and around the world are mandating COVID-19 vaccination coupled with punitive restrictions on freedom of commerce, employment, and medical care for noncompliance, and whereas there are various reasons why Americans choose not to be vaccinated, including but not limited to established medical conditions, previous infection and recovery, preference for therapeutics, robust immune systems, prevention of potential adverse effects, religious beliefs, intolerance to vaccine ingredients, previous anaphylactic and other reactions, and whereas during the 2021 legislative session, House Bill 572, no vaccine mandate by EU rule or agency passed the North Carolina House of Representatives, and whereas during the 2021 legislative session, House Bill 686, an act prohibiting state and local government retribution regarding refusal of vaccines is currently in committee, and whereas on September 9, 2021, despite his promise to the contrary, President Biden directed OSHA rule adoption for mandated vaccinations and/or testing requirements for businesses with over 100 employees. Then it goes on to say that it be resolved that by the Currituck County Board of Commissioners that the board upholds the United States Constitution and fully supports the individual freedom to choose whether to be vaccinated or unvaccinated, and while recognizing the historical efficacy of proven vaccines in public health, rejects policies of mandatory vaccination regardless of Food and Drug Administration approval, rejects proposals for statewide, nationwide, or global vaccine passports, health passes, or similar policies. The board further thanks and supports members of the North Carolina General Assembly and local government officials and other elected officials for their continued efforts to ensure individual freedom to be vaccinated or unvaccinated without penalty or discrimination is fully protected. So this is a resolution that's before the board for voting on this evening that I believe, I don't know of anyone that objects to the way that's phrased. And specifically, Alamo Rural Health dismissed at least two employees. I don't know how many.
Yeah, Paul, let me just interject real quick. I mean, if we want to discuss Alamo Regional Health Services and what they provide to the county, I would be more, I'd be enlightened to discuss that, but getting into personnel matters or personnel policy, Alamo Regional Health is a separate entity. They're not a state or federally, they're not a state or federal agency. They're independent, and discussing personnel matters, and as we don't as a board here, discuss personnel matters, discussing a separate entity's personnel matters and hiring practices, I don't think is appropriate for this board. If we want to discuss the services and what they provide as any impact, I would say, yes, we have, we can discuss that, but getting into discussing individuals' hiring or whatever, I don't think it's appropriate. Now, if we want to discuss any effects that, any delays has to this county, I think that's inappropriate, unless the county attorney thinks otherwise.
I beg to differ. I, I'm not going to mention, I haven't mentioned any individual's name. I'm talking about a policy that's well-recognized and is known throughout this region. I'd like to also refer to a question that Ike had posed based upon information that he had received, specifically an email relative to the Alamo Rural Health's policy, and this is public record.
Okay.
Right? So I think we're still.
Just don't want to get an individual.
I'm not going to get individuals. So on November 5, contact was made by Rebecca Gay to Ashley Stoop to follow up on a Commissioner Owen Etheridge's question whether Alamo Rural Health employees were being dismissed due to a COVID-19 vaccination mandate. She was told that the Alamo Rural Board adopted the policy, but no one at that time was dismissed from employment. Commissioner Payman now informs us that the Alamo Rural Health Board did not adopt a vaccination mandate, that it was left to the director, which you then implemented. Please let me know if that is correct, and if not, Ike is asking for the opportunity to correct what we're under the impression or under the assumption of. So the date of Ike's email was November 18, to which Battle responded, posed an update to the current vaccination policy. At our August executive board meeting, there was consensus from the board to allow me to make that policy change. Deadline for employees to be fully vaccinated was December 1. There are no employees from the Currituck-Alamo Rural Health that are out of compliance, which is kind of disingenuous because specifically that was referring to employees that had been dismissed, that, and I know that religious exemption had been requested, and I'm not, again, not going to go into the particulars of that, but I find it disturbing somewhat that, given the resolution that we're going to pass tonight, this flies in the face of what this board stands for relative to the vaccination mandate and the way threats and/or people are terminated due to that effect. What is probably very egregious to me is that, number one, the apparent lack of consideration from a religious perspective is, number one, is everyone knows that, that, you know, I take my faith very personally, and I have lived through this exact scenario. So I am well-versed from a legal perspective. I don't play an attorney either, but I am not sure that that was fully captured, but that'll be for another entity to decide. But what concerns me is that we're going to feel the effects of this, that everyone believes or is under the impression that it's just new construction, that this staffing change is going to affect, and that's not true at all. It's new septic permits. It's septic repair permits. It's septic inspections. I think there's 400 systems that have to be inspected on an annual basis that this falls under. I have been contacted by everybody from contractors, well, mostly contractors, that this is a, this is a significant threat, and given everything else that we're facing right now, it's disturbing to me. And if we didn't provide leadership, if we didn't provide our direction to this, I'm concerned that, you know, we're a board, you're a representative on the board, and it sounds like, you know, the consensus was, you know, we're going to let Battle do whatever he wants to do.
What's the major concern is that we think we're going to get behind?
No, I, oh, I know we're going to get behind.
Okay, okay, well, let me, let me interject right here. Here's some current information that I received just as of Friday. Okay, the current, currently, Currituck County is a two to two and a half week delay on permits. Last year, the same time, we were three to three and a half weeks behind. So we're better this year than we were last year. There's 13 environmental health specialists regionwide. Currently, there's just one vacancy, and that one vacancy is in Camden. Okay, recently, three hires were made. Two of the last three hires have active authorizations where allows them to work unassisted immediately. The third person should be authorized in food and lodging, which is the restaurant inspections, daycares, et cetera, within six months because of a fast-track process initiated with the state. So Currituck County has no openings in the environmental health specialist position, and the 13, the 13 environmental health specialists rotate around the district as needed. Staff has always been shifted to any demands as they change, as we know, depending on types of developments and what changes, needs may increase, and the, and the staff has been shifted. But right now, we're only a two to two and a half week delay. Last time was three to three and a half weeks, so we are ahead of schedule from last year before COVID. So that being said, Currituck does not have an opening, a delayed opening right now.
So to contradict that.
Well, this is a fact that I have.
Okay. So a snapshot in time a year ago versus a snapshot today is not, that is not a metrics that are worth, I mean, interesting to note. And it's a good place to mark it, but that's not, that is not giving me warm and fuzzy, and I can sleep well at night knowing that everything's under control.
Well, we can't do hypotheticals either about what type of permits we'll get if we get behind. I mean, this is where we're at, the snapshot today, I agree, but doing hypotheticals where we might be, you know, we have to track that.
We ran, I mean, we contract these services with Alamo Regional Health Services, which I would say we partner with them in multiple business. I assisted and run 42 COVID clinics at our different mass things where he had staff, and he doesn't have a very big staff in our area, so just say six people. He had six staffers. The county provided, I think we should have some kind of say-so of who's working with us, just my opinion, you know, where we contracted, you know, we're having eight to 20 guys out there from Currituck County to work on the clinic and doing that to help him, which the ultimate goal was to get as many people shots, and we're assisting, and then somebody that assists us, I think it's a two-way street, and like Commissioner Beaumont said, I just, there were some protocols that I just, you know, for somebody we're contracting with that I didn't approve of myself.
But, I mean, it's always, I mean, the contacts are always, you can always call. You know, this last year, you're right, when we went through those things, Commissioner McCord, yeah, there was a lot of unknowns, feeling through it, I mean, struggles, and we worked through them all there, and we got through it, and I've got a lot of, you know, heard a lot of compliments too on how things went.
Of the ones that you say, the two that are ready, field-ready today, do they have any experience in Currituck County working?
I can't answer that question right now. I don't know, but they have all these certifications in the state, you know, where they could immediately get out there and start. As far as knowledge of existing facilities, unless they've been out there, probably not. I don't know how long it takes somebody to get familiar with certain things. I'm not in that field, so I couldn't tell you.
I know with the different souls and stuff, and I'm not a soul specialist or anything. I mean.
Alls I'm saying is for the past, since I've been on the board for seven years, we've always had 13, you know, specialists, and I've never heard any complaints about delays in permits or anything from this board, any other issues up to this point. And I'm just telling you where we're at now versus a year ago, and I do know it's being tracked, and the resources are there. The only current vacancy in the environmental health specialist area is in Camden right now, which is currently, has multiple applications to be filled as we speak, so that's, so we're probably going to be at 13 here before, like we normally were at any time.
Do we have any idea how the technician that was able to operate for a year and a half in a quote-unquote COVID environment, all of a sudden, what changed?
I mean, I can't answer the specific questions right now. I'm just, I mean, I don't know.
Well, that's a question that I think the advisory board should have asked him. What's changed now that you're going to require vaccinations? He was able to do, I'm not aware of any issues, and going back to your three and a half weeks a year ago? Well, COVID was a little newer a year, a year ago than it is today with vaccinations, et cetera, et cetera, with greater, so that's why I'm saying your snapshot in time from a year ago is not an effective measure as to where we are today.
But if we're worried about permits right now, I'm just telling you, right now, the current backlog is two and two and a half weeks on permits, and, you know, that seems to be the norm from last year, this year, and in previous, because I haven't heard anything that we were way behind in permits prior to this meeting tonight, even speculating we might be.
Well, I'm going to close and say.
That's fine, I'm just, I'm just giving you some information.
I am, I am, the way this was handled, I have a lack of confidence with the way it was managed. I'm going to go on record tonight and state that, that I believe that the way this was done was, was completely wrong. I think that there's a lot of cover six going on right now. I think that to suggest, and, you know, you're in construction, you're in construction, I've been in there too, to suggest that two brand-new hires, one of which is going to fulfill the roles of somebody that had been in this system, in this region for as long as he has been, to suggest that they're, they're going to walk in and be able to take over tomorrow is disingenuous at the least.
And I'm not saying that's going to be the case. What I'm giving information to this board right now is the positions, how they were filled, where we're at with filling to get to the last, the last one, which would make the 13 we've always had, and is being tracked permit-wise, and I've asked to get updates to make sure we stay on track. Other than that, can I answer any questions about how long it's going to take some, no, I can't. But I can tell you that the, the health board has contacted director to make sure that the permits and inspections and all that stay on track, and he assured us, and I can, I can report back to this board. report back to this board monthly and give you updates on where we're at with everything. That's all I can promise you at this point.
I submitted my question to the county manager because I was contacted by an individual that works in the field out of their concern that this is going to slow the process down to the point to where, excuse me, it will cause some problems.
And until we see that, I mean, I understand if it does, then if we see that, it needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed to the Health Board and the Director, and that concern was brought to them. And as we monitored, if it gets to that, the direction was given that it will be addressed immediately if we go down that path. And I'm telling you right now, though, that I've asked how we're addressing this, and this is the information as far as the employee to fill these in.
If we get to a backlog, to suggest that there's a way that, you don't just turn on a spigot and fix the problem. The problem is we let significant skill, for whatever reason, that it's now departed the pattern, to suggest that, oh, wow, we're running behind, we're going to address that. Well, there's only, I guess at that point, there's only one way you fix it, that's hire more people. Is Almaral Health prepare to hire more individuals to ensure that the backlog doesn't increase? Because by the time we figure it out, we're going to be, it could take months to get it resolved.
Like I said, the seven years...
Currituck County will pay the price.
Well, the seven years I've been on this board, it's been 13 environmental health specialists. We're currently at that level, and this is the, I mean, you know, this is the first time I've heard in seven years that there's been an issue with potential, you know, overwork backlog.
My biggest thing...
And I understand what your point is, yeah, we've got new people coming in.
Listen, it's not even that. It's doing the right, I mean, my thing is, we contract your service. We contract their services. And I don't know why we pay more than other counties, but I know we do. We contract their services.
Based on the services provided and at the level of citizens.
So it's a two-way street. We work together. We work together with them and COVID clinics. We work, and I'm not knocking nobody or anything. So we got concerns, and I'm not naming names because we can't do that. We got phone calls, phone calls, phone calls, phone calls, a lot of phone calls about this is wrong, this is going to be a problem, this is going to cause a problem. So we address it, and then, and I'm not saying names, the person put a religious exemption in, and the response was, and the email was 13 minutes?
12.
12 minutes, I'm sorry. The school of government, when I was a magistrate for one year, and if I called them tonight at 8:30 and asked them a question, you're not getting a response, and I'm not knocking the school of government, I doubt they're watching this meeting, but you're not getting a response, and the county attorney slash county manager can attest, you're not getting a response in 12 minutes. If you get a response in 12 minutes, it's just not happening. So my biggest thing, my biggest issue with this whole thing is, is somebody's putting, and I'm not saying names, but somebody's putting their political beliefs that affect Currituck County. We partner with that person, and I don't have an issue with anybody, nobody, I'm not saying names, but I do have an issue when you affect how we operate, because he wouldn't have operated if it wouldn't have been for our staff, the county staff, Mary Beth's staff, the EMS staff, when we did these COVID clinics. So we were a good partner. When we expressed concerns, it didn't matter. That's my issue with them.
Okay, well, I will say that the other, Burtie County, they had the resources there as well, and when we did our clinics, we had staff...
They didn't touch our clinics.
No, no. When they come over, no, what I'm pointing is, there was staff from other regions that did come in to help too, yes.
Yeah, they did. And I'm just saying, like, and when they had the volunteer student from COA, they all wanted to sign up here because it was, no, I'm not knocking other counties. Ours was professionally ran, it was this, it was that. It was like Chick-fil-A. I mean, we had it, we had it working.
Yeah, and the reserves, the reserves loved coming here.
Yeah, and they did. And, but I'm saying is, we partner with you, and I mean, we pay a service, you know, I mean, I, you know, we partner with you. If we express some concerns, and then basically, we're partnering with you, we're helping you, you're helping your business do this, do this, do this, I think as a partner towards us, it's a two-way street, that our concerns were like, whatever. Our concerns were not vocalized.
I didn't hear that, but...
Our concerns weren't verbal. He was not aware of our concerns about dismissing who he dismissed, because we basically greenlighted him and let him decide whatever he wanted to do. And, you know, Currituck County has led the region in philosophy of individual freedoms and your ability to choose how you want to react, how you want to respond. And this is not us. This is not us.
Okay, do we have any further discussions on it?
Just disappointed.
Is there a pending litigation against Almaral Regional Health by individuals who have been dismissed? I'm just asking.
Oh, I bet it's coming. I'll put money on it.
I didn't know, I know you've had conversation with individuals, so I'm just wondering if that's a path being pursued.
I'm not sure.
Okay, all right.
It concerns me that in this whole pandemic, that we're being reactive and not proactive. I mean, we jumped out, the President did a week or so ago about the Omnicrom variant and shut down all travel to this country from South Africa. They kind of walked it back some today because they say now it's like the common cold, the Omnicrom variant. And we're just reacting to thing, and there's going to be so many variants out there like the flu, they're going to continue to come. You're not going to get a handle of it.
And it's the nature of every disease. It mutates until it doesn't kill the host anymore.
For not getting the flu shot, it's gotten fired.
But, you know, it bothers me that there is case studies...
For the first time in our, in our history, we're succumbing to fear. Kevin?
Sir?
There is case studies support what you just said, though. It has happened.
No, I'm saying, I don't know where they've ever fired somebody for not getting the flu vaccine.
There's case study that supports a decision, but yes.
I just didn't know.
Okay, yeah, no, but there is.
Well, I think one thing we have to do is we have to learn to live with it. And you're right, Owen, we can't, we can't live in fear.
No.
And being reactive is often out of fear. And I think moving forward, we've got to ask better questions, and we've got to have the foresight to put our fears and our constitution where our mouth is.
Yeah, I went to Christmastown Saturday. Nice seven-degree weather, beautiful out. You want to talk about droves of people in there? And I can probably count a handful of people that had masks on other than the workers.
But that's part of, that's part of being a free people.
Right, absolutely.
And...
It was a perfect example. They terminated all those firemen. If somebody comes to your home because it's on fire and they kick your front door in to save your life, the first thing you're not going to ask them is, are you vaccinated? Can I see your vaccine card? And I'm not being funny, I mean, that's just stupid. I mean, really, it is stupid. I mean, you know, they operated for all that time, and there was no issue. It's the same thing with people operating in hospitals. They were heroes, and then they were zeros for not getting, I mean, it's just, I don't know, man, I could get on a soapbox, but I'm not going to do that. But it's just, my biggest thing is, we partner with you. I think we should have, and like you said, maybe we, you know, we took the phone calls and didn't make phone calls to the other people, but I was just disappointed in their leadership. And I'll say that, and if he's watching on TV, his leadership disappointed, and I'm not going to say the other word, but it upset me. I thought it was disgusting.
And like I said, everybody, you're right, opinions, everybody can, you feel, it's open, and we can take everyone, good or bad, and we can pass it along and make sure it's appropriate. So, all right. Anything else on B? If not, here and now, I'm going to go ahead and move on to item C, which is consideration of national opioid settlement agreement and authorize interim county manager attorney to execute settlement agreements.
Mr. Chairman, you had in your package 119 pages of two settlement agreements. The entirety of the agreements, which exhibits would have actually been 600 pages, so I think I saved you from that. But as was presented to you back in August, as you acted on the North Carolina agreement among counties and the North Carolina Department of Justice, there was expected, which has now occurred, the national opioid settlement between distributors of opioids and between Janson Pharmaceuticals, whose parent company is Johnson &amp; Johnson. What you have before you tonight now are the, first of all, the distributor settlement agreement, which is McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen, and then again, the J&amp;J or Janson Pharmaceuticals settlement agreement. By agreeing to enter into this settlement agreement, this county, along with many other counties, cities, and states around the country, will resolve this ongoing litigation about opioids, this distribution, its failure by these companies to adequately control and record where and how these opioids were being distributed, and of course, in many communities, the horrible death and other circumstances that have occurred. Under the settlement agreement, the distributors will pay a maximum of $21 billion over 18 years, and Johnson &amp; Johnson will pay $5 billion over nine years, with $22.8 billion in settlement proceeds payable to state and local subdivisions. The funds going directly to states and subdivisions, at least 85% must be used for abatement of the opioid epidemic, and the overwhelming bulk of the proceeds will be restricted to funding future abatement efforts by states and localities. The distributors will make an initial payment, or actually, I guess they had by now, their initial deposit of funds into an escrow account by the end of September 2021, and Johnson &amp; Johnson will make theirs in early summer of 2022. Funds can then begin flowing to states and localities as early as April of next year, depending on when each state that settles meets certain requirements in the settlement agreement. The settlement will also allow for broad use of funds for various abatement uses, including intervention, treatment, education, and recovery services, and it will be left to the state and local governments to decide what best fits their communities. As was presented to you back in August, that's one of the nice things about the agreement between, and somewhat unique thing about the agreement between counties in North Carolina and the North Carolina Department of Justice, that 85% of the settlement proceeds coming into North Carolina will be distributed out to the counties. The North Carolina Department of Justice agreeing that county government is best suited to use and distribute this money toward the abatement of the opioid epidemic in each litigating county's jurisdiction. In addition to the billions of dollars for abatement, the agreements also provide for injunctive relief that requires important changes to the distributors' operations and Johnson &amp; Johnson's operations. First of all, there will be a clearinghouse will be created, which the distributors will be required to account not only for their own shipments, but also the shipments of other distributors in order to detect, stop, and report suspicious opioid orders. They were already required to do that under longstanding federal law and failed to do so, which was part of the allegation set forth in the litigation. Johnson &amp; Johnson, which ceased actually manufacturing opioids in 2015, or ceased marketing them in 2015, and ceased selling them in 2020, will not market or sell opioid products in the next 10 years, and has agreed to cease lobbying concerning prescription opioids for a period of 10 years. And then as to the payment to the private attorneys that represented the states and counties, and we discussed this some during, in August, when we talked about this state of North Carolina agreement with counties, one little hiccup was the attorneys were claiming they were not being fairly compensated. However, in this settlement agreement, less than 10% of the settlement proceeds will be earmarked to compensate private lawyers who've been prosecuting opioids on behalf of the states and the localities. Compensation will occur through an application by those lawyers to a court-appointed arbitrator. And so that's how they will be paid for their services, which no one doubts, they did a lot of work and helped get everyone to this point. Bottom line is that I would recommend to you, as I did in August with the North Carolina agreement, that the board authorize the execution of both of these settlement agreements on behalf of Currituck County and authorize me as interim county manager to execute them on behalf of the county.
Any questions on the board? If not, I'll ask for anything.
I second it.
A move, second from Commissioner McCord. Motion made by Bob White for approval, seconded by Commissioner McCord. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, item D. This was a change that Commissioner Vice Chairman Beaumont asked to discuss regarding the wage reimbursement, or I guess wages for employees as they work through holidays. I'll let you, okay. Let's, Mr. Beaumont continue.
So during the working parade event, spoke to several folks, primarily in the EMS world, and I guess we have kind of a catch-22-type thing where it is possible that someone, and I'll use Christmas as the example, that someone, because the county doesn't recognize Christmas as the holiday, it's the Monday that follows. Is the county holiday?
This year, yes.
Well, we, the county follows the state employee schedule, but I think the issue is that on those years when a holiday, or like Christmas this year falls on a Saturday, that employees like from the Sheriff's Department or EMS who are working do not get paid regular time and overtime, whereas their fellow employees who maybe worked on Friday, the 24th, which is a state holiday...
So it is the state holiday?
Yes.
Somebody told me wrong.
No, it is.
Because that's the federal holiday.
But they have, some agencies have it where, like you said, I mean, you can't like quadruple dip. I had these phone calls too, where like, say you work EMS or a deputy, like a deputy, they work the DuPont schedule. So if they work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I used to always tell people when we did it, I was like, you know, I guess county, you know, because they'd say, oh, man, that's terrible, you have to work on Christmas because you're away from your family, and then you're not getting holiday pay. But then they get it on whenever the state holidays are, which I actually...
Like this year, under our policy, would be Thursday, Friday, and the following Monday.
Monday, which me and Sandra talked about that. Sandra talked about a public safety holiday, and I'm not saying that somebody could get the three that the state has and the other one, but say they were off that day, because this scenario happens all the time. You work a holiday, and you get holiday pay typically. Thanksgiving's on a Thursday always, so you get paid double. You know, holiday and overtime pay, you're away from your family, depending on...
And you would get that on Thanksgiving Day, Thursday and Friday, because that is a state schedule.
Yeah, because that's the second, yeah. But the Christmas is the unique one, and sometimes July 4th, where you're working and they don't get it, you know, which, where I said was, you know, if they celebrate the 4th on the 5th, say that guy didn't work, but then he worked July 4th, nobody wants to work on a holiday. I mean, that's obvious. So, and be away from your family. So if they worked on the 5th, or didn't work on the 5th, they get eight hours of time. But on, we'll just use the deputies for an example. They worked on Sunday, the 4th, and they would get paid their 12 hours if they were on patrol, 12 hours, and then they would get paid 12 hours for holiday pay. So if they, if it falls on the weekend, they just get 12 hours, and they worked a holiday. And then Monday, they would get the eight, where me and Sandra talked actually the other day about this, about the public safety holiday. Some agencies do that, where, be it dispatch, be it, you know, those guys that get stuck in, you know, on the holidays, where, you know, you could, there's a way where other, which we probably have to look into it maybe a little more, where, and we'd actually talked about this previous boards, where they have to look at it, you know, where they could get it that day, and then say they were off that Monday, they would, you know, just so they can't like triple get it. There's a way to do it, and me and the finance director talked about it the other day.
So my, I guess my request is, there appears to be like a double jeopardy where someone works the holiday and doesn't get holiday pay for that, or this is what was communicated to me. I'm just asking that we find out what our personnel policy is. But then, they don't work, how does this work? So they worked during the holiday and didn't get holiday pay, but then they're off...
Friday.
The next day.
They're off and they work Saturday.
So the bottom line is, they're away from their family and they get nothing, you know, on top of that, and then, and we just need to make sure that folks are compensated, that...
Well, I talked a little bit with Sandra about it. Maybe we need to come back to you if this is a board's desire to modify our regular practice and policy, but also maybe to look at other employees that have the same issues, not just fire EMS and law enforcement, but utilities, telecommunications.
And then the issue... Communication. And then talking to Owen, right, it gets interesting when the shift is from 9 until, or 7 till midnight. Anyway, if we could just look at that, because it sounded like folks were not only away from their family for the holiday, but they weren't getting holiday pay.
That would be true if they're working like Christmas this year on Saturday, but if they work Friday, Christmas... if they worked Friday, Christmas Eve, they would.
Got it.
Sandra said, we talked about that, and she's, had some stuff with previous boards, we talked about that, and doing that, and she said there was a way, I met with her the other day about 30 minutes, because I asked her the question, it was brought to myself as well.
Okay, would the board like, county manager to get with Sandra and look, okay, so it sounds like the board would like you to get with her and figure out, make sure we can address that.
I think, we'll get back, get together with her and bring back a recommendation to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Tell the school board we got one of them.
Okay, that takes care of, I believe it's all the questions for item D. We're going to move into item E, which is a consent agenda.
Move for approval. Second.
I need a further discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and at this time, I'm going to recess from the regular meeting and call to order the special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority, and I guess, first item, we have a budget amendment, county manager?
750 and 50. All right. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve those budget amendments.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Budget amendment passes. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn from TDA. Have a motion, have a second from Ms. Jarvis. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, I'm going to reconvene into a regular meeting, and then I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to go into closed session under GS 143-318.11A3 to receive from and discuss with the county attorney, privileged in confidential legal matters, and to consult with the county attorney regarding the case entitled Mark Sissino, DBA Complete Auto Credit versus Currituck County.
In case the board doesn't want to talk about today's CCA argument adds to CCA versus Currituck County as well.
And to discuss the CCA court case versus Currituck County.
Motion.
Second.
Have a second, Ms. Jarvis, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you.